Call the meeting to order. Everyone, please rise for the flag. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona-Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. May I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Burke?
Here.
Mrs. Dye?
Here.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Here.
Mr. Mandela?
Here.
And Mr. Secala?
Here. At this time, I will open the meeting up for comment for items that are on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Good evening, members of the board. Mr. Fetherman, Ms. Tavernier?
Good evening.
Does anyone have any committee reports this evening?
Just here last week.
You mean you didn't go to anything in the last seven days? Seven whole days?
Probably did. I started pickleball, but there's no need to give an update on that.
Okay.
Did you win?
It's not about who wins.
Got it.
It's a recreation thing.
Okay, so we'll move right on to our presentation. Tonight, we are honored to have with us representatives from Performance Matters, Kate Reed and Marnie Stockman. They're here to give us an overview of the Performance Matters software. So, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Before I get started, we'd like to give you just a little background on Performance Matters. We are an assessment and data analytics platform.
Can you just, I'm sorry, can you just speak into the microphone?
Absolutely.
Because we want to make sure the people at home hear what you have to say.
You can even take that off and hold it if you want.
That would be better. I'm feeling short. Thank you. I'll move that out of my way. My name is Marnie Stockman. I'm the Director of Customer Relations for Performance Matters. Prior to working for Performance Matters, I was a high school math teacher, assistant principal at a high school, a math supervisor, and a local accountability coordinator. So, if you have any questions about how to use the platform, I've pretty much played all of the roles that you could play in using it. So, I can, happy to answer those questions. Just wanted to give you and the board a brief overview of some of the capabilities, a very small bit of the capabilities of Performance Matters through a couple of stories on how to use data to impact student achievement and instruction. So, when I began working for Performance Matters, we had it in the district where I worked because I didn't just believe Performance Matters, but I believed Performance really matters. So, I'm going to tell you a little story about my first day as assistant principal at Easton High School. Three days before school started, they had a position open, and they asked me if I would cover it for a year, an interim position, while they looked for somebody permanently. So, I had three days' notice to walk into a high school of 1,200 students. So, I didn't have a lot of time to memorize all the faces in the yearbook. So, I had a yearbook and a guidance counselor who told me the names of what I'll call my dirty dozen, the kids that, the bottom 12 kids who had the most referrals in the school. So, I took the yearbook home. I studied their faces, and I promise you, I could have picked them out of anywhere in a crowded football stadium. I could be like, Cory, good to see you. You kind of look, why do you know my name? It's my job to know your name. But anyway, my story was, on the first day, I figured I'd walk around and go to each of those 12 students' classes, five periods. They would think I was either a stalker or really invested in their education, maybe a little of each. So, I walked into the first, the very first class, the very first day, looking serious as an assistant principal. I was wearing a black suit, and my hair was big, and I was click, click, clicking into class. And I didn't get to the first teacher when I hear a hello very loud from the back of the class. And I can remember thinking, as I turned my head, like, do I chew this child out or what? I'm not really sure what an assistant principal's supposed to do in this. And I turn, and I see this face. It's a little blurry because that's because his father took this picture from very far away in an auditorium. So, this is the face I see. So, for the record, I'm now very good friends with this child. This is Jihad Mills. I'm not violating FERPA because his parents have written that I'm allowed to share his real name and his real story, and Jihad knows that I share his name and his story. They're fine with this. So, this is Jihad. Now, I was in a 10th grade English class, and I was an 11th grade administrator. So, that tells you something about Jihad already. And I was there not to see Jihad. So, he was not on my list because of all the discipline referrals he had. I was there to see one of his friends who sat next to him. So, when I went back and said, "Hi, I'm Mrs. Stockman, 11th grade assistant principal," he said, "I'm Jihad Mills. I'm an 11th grader in this 10th grade English class." And I said, "Oh, nice to meet you. Any other 11th graders in there?" And he proceeds to point out three of the students who were on that list. So, I knew why many of them were discipline problems, but this one stumped me for sure. So, I went around to the other classes that I had to visit, and then I got back to my office two minutes before the bell rang. And so, I decided to go into Performance Matters and see what I could learn about Jihad Mills. So, first, I clicked in and looked at his grades. So, in Talbot County, where he went to school, you're not allowed to get a D, and an E is like failing, right? So, if you look, that's why he's sitting in a 10th grade English class and 11th grade. To date, he had passed three of his classes and failed everything else. I clicked back into attendance. Not horrible, not great. You know, school may not be the number-one priority for him, but he's not a nightmare. And then I clicked into discipline. I wasn't surprised about this because I didn't have him on my list. But interesting that this child in 10th grade class, who calls out the second and assistant principal walks in, has no discipline issues. So, the bell rang. I went out in the hallway. My time gets more interesting because Jihad comes over and stands next to me as a backup security guard. I'm game, whatever. I'm pretty easygoing. So, I'm in charge of making sure laptops are in sleeves and that kids aren't wearing hats, right? Typical assistant principal. So, I'm saying, "Trey, take your hat off your head." And Jihad says, "Dude, bucket off your head," like Ms. Stockman says. All right, this is fantastic. I really like this kid now. So, tell me a little bit about you. And he said, "Well, I'm fast." Like, really fast. I like to run. I was like, "Oh, that's great. Do you play track, run track?" And he said, "Nope. I'm never eligible." I already knew that, right? Three slides earlier. "But I'd like to run again." And I said, "All right. Well, we'll have to work on that. Well, right now, you have 20 seconds to get to class. So, you better start that running right now. We'll start practice." So, he ran to class, and I had two more minutes before I took my laps again. So, I went into Performance Matters, and I clicked on three more screens. So, one thing you need to know about the platform, green is good. It means you passed. Blue is really good. It means you're advanced. And red means not so good. So, remember, Jihad failed almost all of his classes at Easton High School. But when I clicked back to his state assessments, so your version of HESPA, right? All green. First time he took it, all green with a little bit of blue. That's curious. He's failing all of his classes, passing all of his tests. I clicked back again to his middle school scores. That's not good, right? There's some story back there, I'm sure. Then I clicked all the way back to his elementary school scores. Advanced, a lot of advanced, and some green. So, I thought this only intrigued me more about this child. So, when I decided he didn't mind standing next to me in the hallway, I figured he wouldn't mind talking to me in the cafeteria. So, assuming I wasn't going to be too much of embarrassment, I waited till his friends were at lunch, and I'm grabbing their lunch. And I came up to him, and I said, "So, double blue. What's your story?" And he said, "What do you mean, double blue?" And I said, "Well, I looked into you, and I can see that in elementary school you were double blue in math and English. As a matter of fact, you were also blue in science. And then something happened in middle school." And he said, "Oh, yeah. Yep, that's quite a story." And I said, "Well, if you ever want to share that story, you know where my office is." And he said, "Okay, good. But I'll tell you, I'd like to be double blue again." And I said, "Well, you've found the right girl. So, you let me know when you need some help." So, two days later, a very confused friend of his and he were sitting in my office when I got there after school. And his friend was very confused because why would you walk into the enemy's lair when you weren't called, right? So, Jihad had just said, "Carter, you're coming with me." So, I walked in the office and said, "Hey, fellas, what's going on?" And Jihad said, "Well, I'd like to tell you a story about double blue." I said, "I'd like to hear it." And so, I sat down. I won't tell you the whole story, but you already know most of the story, right? It involves a mother that died of a drug overdose when he was three months old, a father that was incarcerated and signed over his rights to the grandparents. The grandmother had passed away. The grandfather, guess what happened at the end of middle school when he turned all red? Passed away. And he's left a ward of the state. So, you may not know Jihad, but I bet you've got Jihad sitting somewhere in one of your classes that you know as well." So, he tells me that story, and he says, "But I'd like to be double blue again because the last thing my grandfather told me before he passed away was, stay out of trouble, no discipline referrals in high school, and go to college." And he said, "But I really don't know how to do part two without some help." So, he assigned himself more in-school suspension than anybody possibly could and came to my office an inordinate amount of time after school and worked really hard to become eligible in track. And he really was fast. He wasn't kidding. First year ever running track. He got third in states in triple long jump. And he kept working hard, kept coming after school, doing what he needed to do, and ended up graduating college and career-ready, getting into a four-year school on the eastern shore of Maryland. So, I tell you that story because in a matter of six clicks of a button, I was able to find out some of the story of Jihad. Now, you can't just take the data without the human element, right? I needed to know what happened from double blue to red. But very quickly, I was able to access information, and then I could use that information to go find the kid and find out what was special about that student. So, that's, you've seen a snippet of what the platform provides in terms of long-term data. But I also want to show you a quick piece of what the platform can show you in terms of day-to-day data. How do I use this in the classroom every day to impact results? So, this is the same stuff that then I would share with teachers as the math supervisor. We always did data analytics as departments. And I certainly did this regularly with Jihad to figure out where we needed to be working. So, I'm taking you to an imaginary district. This is a demo site with demo data and imaginary children. So, it's Tempest Elementary School, and we're looking at third grade. So, in this third grade class at the beginning of the year, I waited too long. I tried to not, but I... So, it times out so that you don't end up leaving data in front of, on a, on a, on computer. It'll time you out so you don't let any secrets out. So, now, I'm going to show you third grade at Tempest Elementary School. So, this is what we call an ad hoc reporting tool, which basically lets you build all of your data as you would like to see it. So, it's a little hard to tell from the back, but I'll tell you, on the left-hand side, it's like your filing cabinet of any data you might be interested in pulling in to see about students. State data can go there, third-party data like DIBELS, RI, SAT scores, AP scores. Grades can go over there as well, and local assessment data. So, pretty much anything you're looking for. And I'm just going to show you a small tidbit of what we can do with that. So, if I'm looking at my third grade class, and this third grade class takes some DIBELS for reading fluency, and I'm going to look at their fall retelling scores. So, again, I mentioned in Performance Matters the color swatching. So, red is basic. Yellow means they're meeting standards, and green is they're above standards in this case for local assessments. I'm just going to hide all the children that don't have scores. And then I'm going to sort them from lowest to highest. So, now, I can see of these 78 students the number that are red. So, as I look at that, I'm going to need to decide what to do with these students. So, a lot of times, we have this data on individual students, right? We've got DIBELS forms all over the place. But I want to see them all together. What are the, what's the common theme? Is there something that all of these students need that I can do to help them? So, I'm hoping that I have a local assessment that can give me some information about this. So, in my assessment folder is where I keep all of the local information. And I'm going to go to my reading folder. And I can see that I've got a third-grade assessment. And when I pull this third-grade assessment up, I can see that, in fact, if you fail the third grade, the DIBELS, you don't do well on the local assessment either. So, that might be a good match to see where some strength and weaknesses are. So, I pull into that further because I've built that test on standards. So, now, I'm pulling up specific common core standards. And when I look in this column, I'll scroll down so you can see all of it, you'll be able to see that the students that do poorer score a lot more red in this particular standard, whereas this entire column, that might be one of two green squares over the entire column. So, what does that tell us for this particular class? Can you tell I'm a Mac girl, and I'm clicking on a PC? I keep hitting the wrong button. So, if I look down the middle column, you can see as I go down, as the scores get higher on the left, I end up with a lot of green. So, that's telling me that I need to do interventions for these students who aren't scoring well on this particular standard. As opposed to my rightmost column, it doesn't matter how you do, I never see green. So, that tells me that I need entire, whole-class instruction on that particular standard, right? So, I've got a place where I can differentiate, and I can really target. I know that I need help on RI.3.4 and that the entire class, I might need some curricular realignment on RL.3.4. So, then, the other half of Performance Matters is the ability to create a test aligned to that standard. So, now, once I've decided that I have some weaknesses in RI.3.4 and RL.3.4, I can build a test for my classroom, a quick formative, to judge where I need to do some work after I provide some more intervention. So, this is the basic Performance Matters platform. There's a lot going on, but I just wanted to show you one little piece of how this works. But you can see from the left-hand side, there are a lot of demographics and ways to filter the data. What I haven't shown you in Baseball Card is you can, of course, pull up any of the traditional subgroups and populations to sort and swatch the data to check groups of students. So, we'll do a Marnie-Cedar Grove test. It'll be a quick five-question test for third-grade reading. So, the nice thing about the platform is we have all of the standards that you may want to align, and not just math and reading. So, if you're high school and you have fine arts and CTE programs, music programs, social studies programs, science programs, AP history, all of those standards are in there. So, a lot of platforms are very, have been math and English-oriented for a long time, but we really want everyone to be able to define the standards so that they can help move students in whatever areas they're interested in. So, this is just where you build the answer key. So, this, after you build this answer key, you will be able to get, print out bubble sheets for the students. We also have an online platform, which I'm not showing you tonight. But as folks are moving to more park-like assessment with technology-enhanced items, that is something available as well. So, as I mentioned, we load a lot of curriculum. We have the New Jersey curriculum. We have the Common Core curriculum in here. We have a lot of national CTE standards in here. So, if I scroll down and look for the standards that I knew I was weak in, my students needed some help in, I'm going to test them on this, I can align the test by adding the standards to the assessment. So, when I do the reporting in Baseball Card, this will tell me exactly how the students do on those particular standards. You can multi-align standards to questions, etc. I saved the test. So, now, my test has been built. It automatically builds a bubble sheet for you that you can print out for the students. And then, after you give the test, and you want to go back into Baseball Card at the end of the year when you go and do their DIBELS round two to see what has happened, I can go look and see if their results have improved. I can see right out of the gate that some of the red students have turned green, and the yellow students have turned green. And my very favorite feature of Baseball Card is that if I come in and turn off full name and choose grade, it's going to aggregate my data. So, you probably want to watch the screen while this happens because the first time I watched, I was like, "Wait, stop. You've got to do that again. That was too quick." So, I'm just going to turn off full name, and then it aggregates the data. So, you can see that I've gone from, bless you, 13% basic and 65% above standards to 8% basic and 74% above standards. So, it's a very fast way for me to say, "Yep, things are moving in the right direction." That's my winter-time DIBELS, and I have another spring one. So, I'm sure if you're on a school improvement team, that looks intriguing that you can get that data that quickly about any of the assessment results. So, it's not just a local assessment. It could be a state assessment, again, DIBELS, SATs, however you choose to look at it. And then, the last piece I will show you is that, before I left Talbot County, they asked me to run the master plan, which is a 400-page document. Like, they literally asked me my last day to do the master plan. But really, what they were looking for was the, was all the data attached to it. So, here, I am tracking that same data, but I just clicked on SWD, which is Students with Disabilities. So, here's your special ed population. And now, I've sorted that same data that we just had for the entire school. Now, I've got it sorted by not students, not special ed versus special ed. And you can see that I have a large achievement gap here, right?[1254.01] And you can see that I have a large achievement gap here, right? But my special ed population went from 83% basic to 33% basic. So there's a lot of power in the analytics, which you can do fairly quickly. So with that, I could talk this for literally hours. Like, it's gonna take me four hours to drive home, and if you called me, I could talk the entire way about data, 'cause I love it. But I thought I'd stop with that, because some of you may have papers to grade tonight. So happy to take any questions.
The board have any questions?
I do. So just to convert, I think, Maryland speak to New Jersey speak. So DIBELS is like our map testing, is that?
Sounds like it.
So, no?
Yeah, it's a reading fluency.
But we don't, we don't give DIBELS, do we?
ERA.
ERA. So, but there's, there's an equivalent test. That was my question. What, we're doing equivalent. So, so we can import, integrate, interface, all of that data into this?
Yes, any data at all. If you can put it on an Excel spreadsheet, or we can grab it from a platform, we can enter it.
Okay, and that goes with PSAT data, SAT data, PARC, NJAS. So we can get history, if you have an 11th grader, we can get the data from when they first came into the school in kindergarten.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, so we ask, so typically, the first time a district starts with this, they choose to upload about five years' worth of historical data, just because it takes some work on your end to get it to us. But we can import it and, and we keep it. So we'll happily take whatever you want to send us.
Okay. And then when you say you generate tests, what does that mean? You, there's questions in a bank somewhere you're generating?
So we have two different options. The one I showed you tonight was a basic, the teacher's already created a test in a Word document and just needs an answer sheet. So the student can, right? And you can also put items in there to populate a test, but that's typically for the typed online platform, if you choose to go with that.
Now that clarifies that. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
Any further questions from the board? Do anybody, does anybody have any questions about the software? I'm happy to take those at this time.
Is this handle attendance?
So we interface with your SIS platform. So we don't take attendance in there, but if you want to track attendance, we can pull those files. But we typically do that quarterly, not on a day-by-day basis.
I was just gonna ask, if you're doing attendance, how, does it automatically, how often do you update?
So typically, they send us files quarterly, so that we can run reports on, like, show me all of the kids who are absent so many days. We don't, we don't normally get that on a daily basis. Yeah.
Is, is this something that's going to be available K up, or?
Yeah, well, very, very well can be, yes. We'd like it to be.
So one thing with that, I'll throw that out, 'cause a lot of kindergarten teachers will say, are my students gonna have to bubble in bubble sheets? Part of the ability with the bubble sheet, there's also the ability for the teacher to just manually enter a score. So a lot of times, when you're doing DIBELS or, or school readiness type of thing in pre-K or kindergarten, the teacher just does an interview assessment and types the answers in as they're talking to the student, so the data's still in there, but the student didn't have to bubble in a bubble sheet.
Will it work with MAP? Does it go along with Genesis? Is this a program addition of the Genesis? Does, I mean, are we doing that with VD? Does Genesis, are we announcing that? Will our Genesis program do the same thing as this?
So Genesis interfaces with this, so it talks right to us. So we set up the file, so that we automatically get them from Genesis. So if you have a new student come in today, as soon as it's enrolled in Genesis, it'll pop into our platform tomorrow. So we work with, I think, 19 other New Jersey districts, and some do have Genesis. So this is, this is typical for us, we do that a lot. Your other question, what was the first part of it?
Well, you don't use.
Oh, map testing was the, okay, so yes, we have, any, any, so we don't put special ed IEPs in the platform, but we do track students by whether or not they have IEPs. That would come from Genesis as well. And then we take MAP, we have districts that use MAP and WEA, lots of, you know, the SAT, Plan Act, ASPIRE, all of those tests. And, and literally, any, anything, any score you would want to put on an Excel spreadsheet, we could put in there as well. So we can pull any kind of data.
I think you just answered my question. I was just wondering about, you know, we're talking about a lot of standardized test results and making those comparisons to DRA, but are we talking about regular classroom assessments and that sort of thing?
Absolutely. So when we started in the school district, where I was the math supervisor, the biology supervisor, started using the platform, and they gave Friday formatives, where every Friday, they give a five-question formative, just like I built for you, based on the five objectives from that week. And the students knew that any question they got wrong, they had to take that homework packet on. So if you got question two and five wrong, you had a week to go do packets two and five. So we're really motivated to go all green on this test.
You just said something that I was wondering about, too. There, then do our assessments, or should our assessments always be standard aligned? So that, you know, these five questions are addressing R.I. point 4.9, and these are addressing R.I. point 4.1? Is that the goal?
Well, certainly, the better data you put in, the better data you're going to get out, right? Especially, I would say, if you're aligning something to SGOs, that you really want to track success on a standard.
Okay, thank you.
But they don't have to be, but I would, best practice, I'd say yes.
What I'm hearing is that that's what breaks the value.
Yes, absolutely.
It's the only, excuse me, the only question that I have, I know there have been some concerns expressed from members of the public in prior meetings about the safeguarding of student information and, and test scores, and wondering what your company does to make sure that, that, that information is safeguarded.
Sure. So I could use all the big words, like secure socket layers and 1024-bit encryption, but I know them all apart, but put together, what does that mean? It means we use the same level of security that online banking uses, so we meet the same standards that an online banking system would use. We have, our databases are all partitioned, so that your database would not be on a neighboring district's database, so there's no fear of cross-contamination of any of the data. We have practices and policies in place for all of our employees, as to what, you know, we sign the same non-disclosure agreements of what they can do. You know, we can't download the data onto private computers, et cetera. And with that, if Cedar Grove has a specific use policy for data, then we put that on the front screen, and we're not allowed to log in, and no one from the district is allowed to log in without signing, without agreeing to that statement. That said, only the district can provide us with logins that are password-protected, and the district has immediate access to turn that off. So, you know, we occasionally had to let somebody go in the middle of the year, and part of our procedure for letting someone go in the middle of the year was to turn off their performance matters access immediately. So there are, the other, the other magic words I know are there, redundant security systems and redundant firewalls to protect the data, and we have not had any data breaches.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a follow-up question. So in the event we decide to part ways at some point, what happens to the data?
So any of the information that's in there is your information. So we can provide exports of the data. We always archive the data, so you can access it year after year, but that data belongs to you. So you don't, you don't lose any of the data. You would get it in typically CSV or Excel exports.
Okay, um, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having us.
We're just gonna take a two-minute break, so our guests can leave, and then we'll, we'll get to board business in about two minutes. Okay, we have a pretty big agenda, we're gonna try to get through it fairly quickly. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, under minutes, may have a motion for items B1 through B3. B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of May 12, 2015. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the months of May, for the month of May 2015. And B3 is a motion to approve the board secretary certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the Administrative Code, that no line item has encumbrances and expenditures which exceed the appropriation in violation of that code. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Secala?
Yes. Under bills, may I have a motion for B4, which is a motion to pay the bills that were provided to us in our packet for May 19, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Secala?
Yes. Under business, may I have a motion for items B5 through B9? B5 is a motion to approve Mr. Robert Donahue, architect, to prepare the necessary drawings and bid documents for the removal of one obsolete boiler, the removal of existing damage and obsolete piping, pumps, and controls, and the related installation of new piping, pumps, and controls at Cedar Grove High School in the boiler room. B6 is a motion to approve AHTA Associates, Associated Designated Person Services Provider, to prepare the necessary bid document paperwork for the abatement of the asbestos material in the Cedar Grove High School boiler room. B7 is a motion to require that all checks, drafts, or other orders for payment or withdrawal of money from set account be signed by the person holding the appropriate title, and those persons are listed in B7. B8 is a motion to approve the establishment of a petty cash fund, to appoint the custodian of the fund pursuant to the Administrative Code as set forth in that item. And B9 is a motion to approve the receipt of $30,000 from the estate of Dorothy Petuli to be used for the establishment of the Laura J. Petuli Scholarship at Cedar Grove High School, the class of 1990. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Secala?
Yes. Okay, from the Office of the Superintendent of Schools, under personnel, Mr. Featherman, you have a superintendent's report for us this evening?
I do, thank you, Mr. Secala. Good evening, everybody. I didn't make 100 copies of the report, it's pretty extensive, but certainly, a lot of you in the room contributed to it, so, you know, enjoy reading and reflecting on the good work that you're, on a daily basis, participating in. It gives me great satisfaction, visiting the hallways and the classroom spaces, the office spaces, every week, and, and seeing it all come together. And it's nice to report back on our progress to the public. So by all means, consume those reports, they'll be posted online, there's much going on. For the sake of time, I would like to highlight the, the big accomplishment, right? We've been working on something for the last few months, and I think there are some folks in the room that contributed to rewriting, or really, a full rewrite of our language arts curriculum, grades K through 5. So I wanted to say thank you to all of you who participated in that. Job well done. So, yes, absolutely. Absolutely. You know, it's all part of the master plan. We had CUSAC come in here a while back, and we're not gonna revisit those results exactly, but we did put together an ambitious plan, and really, phase one has been completed. So on June 9, we will officially adopt those curricular rewrites, and moving on, as we've been, to math, K5. So there's much work ahead of us, but we're making substantial progress. Keep up the great work.
Thank you, Mr. Featherman. Under personnel, may I have a motion for S1 through S9? S1 is a motion to approve the superintendent's report. S2 is a motion to affirm the superintendent's report on harassment, intimidation, and bullying from the May 12, 2015 executive session meeting, as set forth in that item. S3 is a motion to approve Adriana Durso, high school Italian teacher, at the step and salary set forth therein. S4 is a motion to approve Laura Hartgen, MMS middle school math teacher, at the step and salary set forth therein. S5 is a motion to appoint the following staff member, or the staff member as listed, in accordance with the state emergent hiring procedure. S6 is a motion to appoint the staff for summer custodial maintenance at, at the hourly rate as set forth therein. S7 is a motion to approve the submission of the superintendent's Merit Goals Notice of Completion, one qualitative and one quantitative, for the 2014-2015 school year. S8 is a motion to accept the resignation of Karen Coots, first grade teacher, South End School, effective June 30, 2015. And S9 is a motion to retroactively approve pre-K lunch duty coverage at North End for remainder of the school year, at the rate listed therein for the employees set forth therein. May I have a motion for those nine items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I just, quickly, just want to wish Ms. Coots the best of luck. I know she's, I heard today that she had submitted her resignation, she's gonna stay home with her, her children. I know that she taught one of my children, and she's a wonderful teacher, so I wish her the best of luck. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Secala?
Yes. Under, continuing under personnel, may I have a motion for items S10 through S17? S10 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the tenured professional staff members as listed in that item. S11 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the tenured administrative staff members as set forth in that item, this is for the 2015-2016 school year. S12 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the custodial staff members for the 2015-2016 school year as set forth in that item. S13 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries of the non-tenured professional staff members as set forth in that item for the 2015-2016 school year. S14 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the non-tenured administrative staff members as set forth in that item for the 2015-2016 school year. S15 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the non-tenured administrative staff members eligible for tenure, shown below, for the 2015-2016 school year. S16 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the secretarial staff, shown below, for the 2015-2016 school year. And S17 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the non-tenured secretarial staff, shown therein, for the 2015-2016 school year. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Secala?
Yes. May I have a motion for items S18 through S24? S18 is a motion to approve the stipend positions for the 2015-2016 school year, and as you go through the agenda, you'll see they're, they're separated by high school, middle school, and North End, South End, and I guess there's another item for combination, North End and, and South End. S19 is a motion to approve Jimmy DiStefano as a site coordinator for virtual high school at, at the rate set forth therein for the 2015-2016 school year. S20 is a motion to approve the staff members as listed therein as middle school team leaders for the additional base pay as set forth in that item. S21 is a motion to reemploy and set the salary and rates for the staff members as set forth therein for the 2015-2016 school year. S22 is a motion to approve the coaches for the 2015-2016 school year. S23 is a motion to approve the personnel for the 2015, the summer 2015 extended school year program as set forth in that item. And S24 is a motion to authorize the attendance for the employees and the events as set forth in S24. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Secala?
Yes. May I have a motion under policies and regulations for S25, which is a motion to approve on first reading, the policy and regulations that I'm gonna, that are listed therein, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Featherman to give us an overview on in, in just a moment. May I have a motion for that item, please?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Featherman, you have an overview of the policies that we were gonna be approving on first reading this evening?
I do. Thank you again, Mr. Secala. I'll stick to the script, it's, it's a few pages long, so we'll get through it fairly quickly. What I'd like to do is read a summary of each of the policy and regulation updates that we're adopting. Policy 0134, board self-evaluation, it's no longer a monitoring requirement. The most recent CUSAC monitoring provisions no longer require a board to perform an annual self-evaluation, although a board's self-evaluation process may be a best practice. Bylaw 0134 has been revised to make this process optional. Policy 0152, board officers, this is a revision. There have been recent requests by, for additional bylaw policy guidance on the election of board officers, and Bylaw Guide 0152 has been updated to provide some additional guidance in the election of board officers. Additional details not addressed in Bylaw Guide 0152 would be governed by Robert's Rules of Order. The revisions to Bylaw Guide 0152 provide additional details for the voting options of a verbal roll call, vote, or the use of a written ballot. In addition, the Bylaw Guide 0152 removes the option of electing an officer with a plurality of the board, and indicates, quote, "The candidate with the majority vote of the members of the board present and constituting a quorum shall be elected." Policy 2622, student assessment, a revision. Policy Guide 2622 has been revised to incorporate the provisions outlined in a DOE memorandum in addressing the opt-out inquiries, and to align with the current Administrative Code subchapter NJAC 6A8-4, implementation of the statewide assessment system. You may have heard of it. PARC, or something, something along those lines. In accordance with NJ DOE guidance, the updated policy guide specifically states, there are, quote, "Is no provision for a student to opt out of statewide assessment." However, upon request of many school districts, Strauss S.M.A., our policy provider, has developed a suggested internal procedure to be used when a parent refuses to have their child participate in a statewide assessment. We've had that conversation, we have not adopted a regulation, or rather, a practice, where students will be provided an alternate setting, but not alternate education instruction. More on that to follow as the DOE rolls out its revisions, going through the Senate, so stay tuned. Policy 3212 and 4212, attendance, these are revisions. Policy Guides 3212 for teaching staff and 4211 for support staff have been revised. The updated guides address two frequently asked questions. Number one, the definition of sick leave has been added to these policy guides, indicating sick leave is a person's absence from work because of, quote, "personal disability due to injury or illness." The second issue is the superintendent's right to require a physician's certificate, as per Administrative Code, which has also been added to the two guides. A previous monitoring provision required the superintendent of schools to develop a program, if the rate of absence for professional staff exceeds 3.5%, is no longer required by the New Jersey Department of Education, and has been removed. Policy 3218 and 4218, substance abuse, these are revisions. New policy and regulation guides 3218 and 4218 concerning a staff member's use of drugs, alcohol, and anabolic steroids have been significantly revised to reflect the current practices used in school districts if a staff member is suspected of reporting to work under the influence of drugs or alcohol. There is not a New Jersey statute or Administrative Code that specifically addresses procedures to be used when a school staff member is suspected of coming to work under the influence of drugs or alcohol. However, there is a 2004 Commissioner of Education decision, the Bayonne Teachers Association versus Board of Education of the City of Bayonne, that upheld Strauss S.M.A.'s policy and regulation 3218 that required an immediate medical examination of a school employee who was reasonably suspected of being under the influence. The new policy guide 3218 is similar to the current 3218 guide, except the new policy guide does not provide specific first offense, second offense, third offense, and fourth offense consequences, and just indicates any staff member who is confirmed as reporting to work under the influence, quote, "will be subject to appropriate discipline, which may include termination of a non-tenured teaching staff member, or the filing of tenure charges for a tenured teaching staff member in accordance with law." Policy 5200, attendance. We had earlier adopted this revision, I guess about a couple of months ago, there have been some subtle changes to it. The New Jersey Department of Education published a broadcast memorandum regarding reporting student absences. In summary, recently adopted New Jersey Administrative Code language had some conflicting language with directions in school register regarding excused versus unexcused absences. They have since cleared that up. The memorandum clarifies the DOE's position on this issue and indicates, quote, "How excused and unexcused absences are defined for purposes of expectations and consequences regarding truancy. Student conduct, promotion, retention, and the award of course credits is a local decision." And school districts can take any and all action authorized by their policies and procedures when categorizing these absences. We'll leave it at that. Policy 5460, high school graduation, also a revision. School districts have been informed by the New Jersey State Board of Education and the DOE. They are transitioning away from the high school proficiency assessment, AKA the HESPA, as the statewide assessment graduation requirement, and will be using end-of-course assessments as part of the department's collaborative work with PARC. An earlier memorandum from the Commissioner of Education and subsequent clarification memorandum from the DOE explains, for the high school graduating classes of 2016, 2017, and 2018, students will be able to satisfy the statewide assessment graduation requirement demonstrating proficiency in ELA and math by achieving passing scores on either PARC, or by meeting or exceeding cut scores on third-party college readiness assessments, SAT, ASVAB, and so forth. We had mentioned those a while back. Students that do not demonstrate competencies either through PARC or one of those substitute competency tests may use the NJ DOE portfolio of the appeal review process that has been in place since May of 2010. Policy 5465, early graduation, a revision. Revisions to statewide assessment graduation requirements are outlined in the explanation above, that I just read, for Policy Guide 5460. They require similar revisions in Policy Guide, this one here, 5465, early graduation, as this policy guide also references HESPA, so that language has been changed. And lastly, Policy 8630 and Reg 8630, regarding emergency school bus procedures and bus driver, bus aid responsibility. Policy Guide 8630 concerning bus driver, bus aid responsibility regulation. Guide 8630 concerning emergency school bus procedures have been revised and updated. Our transportation folks will be working with those guides to make sure that what we're doing is statutorily required.
Thank you, Mr. Featherman. Does anybody have any questions, or any discussion on any of the policies? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Secala?
Yes. Under contracts, may I have a motion for S26, which is a motion to approve the contracts as set forth therein for the 2015-2016 school year for special education students as recommended by the Director of Special Services. May I have a motion for that item, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Secala?
Yes. The meeting is open to the members of the public for comment for items that are either on or off the agenda. Hearing none? Close that portion of the meeting. Does the board have any final comments before we ask for a motion to adjourn? Okay, the announcement of future meetings, June 9th, 2015, will be our next meeting here in the North End Media Center, 7:00 PM executive session, 8:00 PM regular meeting, and June 23rd, will that be our last meeting? Of the, of the school year? June 23rd, 2015, here in the North End Media Center, 7:00 PM executive session, 8:00 PM regular meeting. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes, the meeting is adjourned.